So we're hoping that people can spend thirty dollars to buy some books. So we'll be able to get some books, have some storage in it. Yeah, because I love my parents, but it's like four hundred.
Yeah, she said she went to one, I forgot that one.
Yeah, it was very, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, oh, yeah. Uh, the consultant was telling me that they looked into it. It was under historic, so they came with it. They were still around today. Sort of an older technology or something.
Really? Yeah, I understand. One bedroom apartment. Well, it's a different place. One base key. I'm sorry. But I just see. I got this. I live in a lot of school. It's level three, probably. I guess it's a site. More info for it. Well, that means it's more interesting. No, that's everything. Whoa.
I just don't want to. Did you read that?
Now, I heard, I heard about this.
Yeah, I didn't even know. I was like right now, I'm like.
Well, I actually. Close your. This is what's happening. Yeah, I had one of these. I was starting out. Last year. Just kind of go. Yeah, it's a little bit more than forty.
Good.
It was great before. You see, it was something. It's a little bit. And we'll get to it.
I am just curious.
That's why I said you were down here. Well, I see.
Starting to think.
Will they raise the digital nineteen dollars? Just a question. I would like to get out. Just get out. I have a dollar. If you'd like to. Make it sound worse. I think that's a personal. You know, that will make it a lot easier to choose. So it's like, you know, you're, you're venturing into operations.
Mm-hmm.
You're overstepping. I think. I think from this, uh, anti-.
I mean, yeah, you're, you're major overstepping.
I got a picture. Yeah. What, what do you find? Very high. Canada only got anything. Part is real. Doesn't all of this matter? But I haven't.
I don't know. Oh. Um, well, I've never been to any really high.
Here.
That's why I was.
Last year.
I don't know.
Because I have.
I don't know. There's a probably. I'm really excited about it. I'm glad.
So you get in the same area.
You wish my best years.
But you got. Didn't appear like twelve thousand dollars. You're normal, yeah. You're big. Two thousand five. Forty thousand five, four seven. That's. But, uh, that's not going to work fine. I got more money.
Yeah. And I'm on my.
That right there. So you have your.
I actually kind of.
Wait.
You're raised.
I am careful. I'm. That I'm getting through this. Second.
I sat down.
So again, how are you?
I'm great. I'm good.
How are you?
Email. Oh, you're not. Okay. Five percent.
Are you done? Finally, that's great.
Yeah. All right.
See, we worked on. It's like. Yes, Mark. Great. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Can anyone? Okay, I'll do that. Well, my brother. Zero. Oh, yeah. That's for next month. Could it be? Thirty dollars. Market. I love it. They are actually. I have a spirit like that. Of course. Since you're two thousand. And I guess it's a huge. Well. Well, all that aside. My very best to the in-person. Okay, it's kind of my ears. We love. I want to know. Okay. We need to have a big, big, cool kid. And maybe our system is just. I want to hear one of those. Just make sure it's all. This would be not only to turn the air. This would be a place to try to do a task. I believe in saying, I mean, it's rather incredible. It's been like a little bit impressive.
Really.
So. I see. So I'm going to. He's real. Yeah. I would say if they would like to make this up. I know. And that's, that's what all. Well, so that's. Okay. This is such a good. Really, it's. So that is. It's not like.
I'm traditional. All of them.
Seriously. We can handle. Yeah. And we're trying to. It's. And, um, we should. And we should be. President. In this kind of. Here. Thanks for my. There was, there was. This is times. So I know. I'm waiting. So. It's. Right. I think it's. All right. So there is. I'll, I'll give you this. This is what I should. Moving forward. You're here at all the time? You come. Here. I think it's. So you, you know that? Thank you. So you're going to speak. Operation. We were. Okay. But we were. That's the argument. Uh-huh. Not so. We are. About this. Okay, so. Most session. Not as they're also. And very close. And, uh, and, uh. That's. Oh, okay. So. We spoke. Prior. Like cases.
Is this right here?
Yeah. That's not my question.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have a question. I didn't make it until I did it, so. Questions. Yeah, questions. Okay, I don't want to. Oh. Yeah, we'll wait.
I know.
That's.
Why do you, why do you? You are.
Hey, Nora.
Thanks.
For all the. I'm not. I was.
Why are you?
No problem. You still have time.
Yes, because then I have to make a special.
Putting a lot of.
Oh.
You had to. That's.
What are your birthday?
Twenty eighth. Next Friday.
The city, the city of East Colorado is still demanding that we stop serving.
Are you doing? Are you gonna have?
Our residents. On a special day.
You guys are cost long. That is the birthday. Well, the birthday is a day for a city that's. For one day. Normal business day. You know, about. And they keep. Well, days.
Oh, hi.
So I checked here. I don't have.
Hi. I have a colleague. And I need to say. No, but is.
So how old is this?
So sometimes also. That's what.
Thank you.
John.
Hey. That's about the truth, Senator.
Uh, I. I wasn't going to take that down.
Okay.
Wireless.
Just give another ten here.
Getting this trouble and they weren't telling us. Yeah. Good. Moody, how are you?
I'm good. It's twenty after.
Why didn't you call upstairs? Why didn't you come upstairs?
I thought you were going to say, the public is waiting. Let's get this on stage.
You say that.
And, uh, and then, uh.
You see. Come up.
Right. Don't make it sound like nothing.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. Uh, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Abrica.
Uh, here.
Councilmember Rutherford.
Here.
Councilmember Moody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gochet.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, can we have roll? Oh, sorry. Just a roll call. Um, before we go ahead and get started, um, I just want to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Uh, we're pleased to have neighbors, friends, and visitors attend the meeting tonight. If you would like to speak on an item this evening, please complete a speaker's form, which is on the small table next to the door. You will have an opportunity to speak on items not on the agenda, under community forum. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please indicate the number on the speaker's form. Uh, we respectfully ask that of courtesy to everyone in attendance. Uh, you do not clap or boo when a particular item is being discussed. Um, and again, thank you for attending and for your courtesy. So can we have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Gochet.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Rutherford. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes with five yes votes. Okay, moving on to approval of the consent calendar.
Let's see. Just a minute. There's nothing. I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Gochet to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
A second by Councilmember Moody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we hear? And did everyone say? Oh, you're waiting. Okay.
Okay. Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think that's five. Yes, votes. Okay, so moving on, uh, we have, it looks like we have one special presentation this evening, and we have, in a lot of time of ten minutes. And our, uh, special presentation is from New Reading Center at Brentwood Academy in East Palo Alto.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Martinez and the members of the City Council. Thanks for having us here. Uh, my name is Ty Esteban Sunanan. I'm the Executive Director for Reading Partners, uh, here in Silicon Valley, and I'm here with my colleague Jay-Z Abadanya, uh, who does volunteer recruitment and got us on the docket this evening. Uh, the short and sweet is, I'm going to talk about, uh, today, and if I could have everyone, I'll be using this PowerPoint, uh, presentation on that slide, uh, excuse me, in that direction, about Reading Partners here in East Palo Alto. Uh, why we're here and the difference we want to make on the lives of the kids, uh, in this, uh, great city. So, um, Reading Partners started in nineteen ninety-nine, um, with the sole purpose of helping to close the literacy gap. Period. It's all we want to do. We want to help kids K through five in need, who can't read, learn how to read so that they can become successful. Um, and we all know the stats, right? We all know that, uh, across the U.S., only thirty-two percent of students are reading proficiently at grade level. Here in California, that's four out of five, um, who can't read by the time they're in third grade. And in Silicon Valley, that's three out of five. Kids in need cannot read by grade level. And we all know what happens when a kid can't read, uh, at third grade level. The thing that excites me about Reading Partners and why we're here is because we help to boost a literacy confidence in kids, teaching them the actual technical, uh, skills to learn how to read. And so how we do it is, uh, we're in seven states, including the District of Columbia. We've grown exponentially in the past two years. We were only in three sites here in California, and now we're in eleven regions across the country. And how we do it is simple. Uh, we bring in great volunteers, like people in this audience, and we match them with a student. So it's one-to-one. One volunteer, one child, so that they get the individualized attention for two forty-five-minute sessions a week. So in ninety sessions, in ninety minutes, a student, K through five, can, uh, increase their literacy gains and get closer to grade level at the end of one year. And I'm going to show you some of the results we've had. A month and a half ago, we opened up our newest school, our twentieth school here in Silicon Valley at Brentwood Academy, working with Principal Tammy, uh, working with Castileia High School, uh, working with Eastside Prep, uh, working with, uh, other community partners and nonprofits, and even other, uh, literacy organizations. There's a lot of great literacy programs out there, so we want to, uh, collaborate because there's a lot of great synergy. Um, and I'll draw your attention to our, uh, video. Two minutes, and it gives you the essence of what Reading Partners is and how we do it, and it's better than me talking for the remaining six minutes.
There is an early reading crisis in the United States. Today, four out of five fourth graders from low-income families cannot read at grade level. Reading Partners volunteers work one-on-one with students who are struggling to read, giving them an amazing gift, the gift of opportunity.
This program works because it gives targeted, one-on-one instruction to struggling readers.
I get to learn and read them right, and I couldn't do that before.
I really think education is important, and I believe that it all starts like at a young age, so that's why I got involved.
Equipped with an easy-to-use, highly-effective curriculum, Reading Partners tutors have helped thousands of students become strong, confident readers.
What I love about our program is, as a volunteer program, you really get a lot of bang for your buck. You come in for forty-five minutes a week, and you can see a student jump one or two grade levels even in a year. That's incredible. For only forty-five minutes a week, you can really transform a child's life.
They came in thinking that they were more able to read, and took the time that you spend with them. They come out being able to understand, and they feel better about that.
I feel happy because I read a lot. My brain starts to be happy because I read funny stories.
I find that the one-on-one interaction is key for a lot of students who are in high-risk situations. Often families are large, uh, parents work two or three jobs, and sometimes the one-on-one only happens here.
If you in any way want to give back, not only to your community, but to the world, I would so recommend Reading Partners.
Reading Partners has taken me far.
They got my daughter to read. She didn't know how to read. Now she does.
You can make a difference in the life of a child with as little as one hour a week. Be a hero. Become a reading partner. Visit readingpartners.org today.
Uh, so that's how we aim to close the achievement gap, is that linear focus on literacy. And at Brentwood, again, uh, we opened there a month and a half ago. We're really excited. Uh, we certainly want to expand if we can help, uh, make the gains for the kids there. We are currently serving, our goal is to serve thirty fourth graders at, uh, Brentwood Academy, and we currently are serving twenty-five out of thirty because we need, uh, to bring in more volunteers. So Jay-Z and I are constantly out in the community, uh, recruiting volunteers. Um, some of the gains that we've made, and then I'll bring it back to Brentwood and, and why we're here. Um, last year, um, across Silicon Valley, we served a little over nine hundred and fifty students. Of those nine hundred and fifty, eighty-eight percent accelerated the rate of learning. Um, we also were able to increase, uh, children's confidence, and that is so huge, right? If you can get a kid to get excited about reading and not be embarrassed by the time she's in fifth grade, that she can actually learn how to read, think of the potential and the opportunities for her success, right? Her ability to graduate high school and, and move beyond that. This year, our goal is to serve across Silicon Valley, one thousand one hundred and twenty students. Um, and we're asking a total of, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty volunteers to log in approximately eighty-one thousand hours of literacy tutoring. Very quickly, in two minutes, I'm going to give you the three reasons why I believe, uh, Reading Partners is able and willing to take on this challenge to help close the literacy gap. Uh, talk very briefly about our model and how it works at Brentwood Academy. Uh, number one, we build relationships. It's key, right? We work with schools because we can give the individualized attention, uh, and we work with educators and the school leadership, like Tammy and, uh, the teacher leaders there, uh, because in our pull-out model, when we work one-on-one with kids, we are able to help elevate their literacy skills so that by the time they go back into the classroom, uh, they're more apt and better prepared to join their classmates in the lesson. Number two, structured curriculum. Last year, our research and evaluation team in Colorado restructured and realigned our entire curriculum, uh, to the Common Core State Standards, right? So teachers love it because we want to make this easy for them. Um, and so it's guided, uh, research-validated curriculum, very easy to follow. We ask anyone who is minimum fourteen years old in ninth grade to join us and become a tutor, uh, and we have a lot of, uh, corporate retired executives joining us as tutors as well. Third, and this is big. I know this is, uh, I'm not a fan of, of displaying tables on PowerPoint, but, uh, I will showcase, uh, one small point here. Is that, uh, thank you, Jay-Z, on the independent reading level, uh, where it says three, uh, Sergio was a fifth grader, um, when he joined Reading Partners, and in September of twenty-eleven, uh, when we assessed his reading, uh, level, he was reading at a third grade, so two years behind grade-level reading. That's our perfect target for us. We go half a year to two years behind grade level. That's our target population. In mid-year, he was reading, uh, three months above the fourth grade level, and at the end of the year, that five-point-three signifies that at the end of the year, he was reading three months above the fifth grade level. That's how we do it. We assess progress all along the way, and what's great is we try to triage this. See, this is the sweet spot. You know, we're not claiming we're closing the little sugar gap. How we do it is the triage effect. So it's our site coordinator who works there full-time, uh, communicating with the teacher, the student's teacher, and communicating with the parent. That's how we do it, because we also help to build out the library at the student's home. Um, lastly, this is what a reading center looks like. It's very kid-centric, very kid-friendly. Um, this is our school at Brentwood that we're very excited about, and our ask tonight is twofold. One, uh, we want to spread the word so more volunteers can come into Brentwood Academy. We definitely want to increase the number of students we're serving there tomorrow, uh, next year and tomorrow. And number two, we're asking the council to just spread the love, spread the awareness of this. Uh, again, there's a lot of great literacy programs, and I encourage everyone to volunteer up the one that is a right fit for you. And that is really it on my end. I, I will depart by saying this. If you folks genuinely believe that every kid has a right to learn, that the Marias, that the Jamal's, and the Keisha's all have that in them to gain those literacy skills, then I say to you tonight that Reading Partners is ready, we are willing, and we are on fire for this. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone wants to sign up to be a volunteer, let us know. Jay-Z and I are happy to talk to people afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmembers, do you have any questions for?
Oh, yes.
Our presenter.
Yes, to the chair. Um, thank you for your time, and I think this is a great program. Exactly when you're talking about time, what's the timeframe? When do you, when do you normally meet with the, the students?
Great question. So, um, it's, we ask community volunteers for a minimum of one hour a week for one semester, and, uh, times are variable, anywhere between eight o'clock a.m. to five-thirty p.m. It depends. We, because we work so closely with the school, we leave it up to the school leadership to tell us, this is when you can pull out a kid. So sometimes it's during the school day, sometimes it's after school, but on average, it's one hour anywhere between eight to five p.m.
So in this year, you, um, your goal is to have thirty students, and you're at twenty-five right now.
Correct.
If you had all five of the council members, you would definitely make it to thirty.
Amen, City Councilmember. Yes. Amen to that. Yes. Do I, do I hear a motion to get all five city councilmembers to volunteer tutor and represent East Palo Alto? Um, Mayor Martinez is smiling, but she wants to move on. Yes. Any other questions? Thank you for that.
Councilmember Rutherford.
Um, you did mention, um, one of the requirements, be fourteen years old.
Yes, ma'am. Minimum fourteen years old.
And you have corporate retirees.
Correct.
Is there any other requirements? Do you have to be fingerprinted or anything like that?
Oh, yes. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, yes, absolutely. For me, it's a given, uh, because I've been an educator for almost twenty years now. So, yes. Uh, two things that we ask for are TB testing and live scan fingerprinting. But I'm pleased to tell everyone here that Reading Partners reimburses up to twenty-five dollars for each of those. So we, again, we try to make it easy and efficient, and if anyone here works for a company or corporation or neighborhood association, uh, we can bring a live scan representative and get it all done in the, you know, to make it efficient for you folks, and we will foot the bill.
Thank you.
No, thank you. That's a good question.
I have one question.
Yes, Councilmember Moody.
Okay. Um, I really appreciate what you're doing over there with Tammy Espinoza, and, uh, Brentwood is, their API scores have really provided a lot of leadership for the Ravenswood City School District.
That's right.
I like the idea that you're also working with other reading literacy partners in the community, because you're absolutely right. There are many people who are very, uh, committed to raising the reading levels for the kids in our community.
That's right.
I wanted to ask you, um, is there a role for, for parents to get engaged in what you're doing? Um, whether as a volunteer or providing snacks or those types of things? Are they incorporated in, in the program?
Absolutely. And, uh, so I, I moved here seven months ago from Cambridge, Massachusetts, and what I'm learning now is, you know, my model of any type of education program is community empowerment, and that has to happen from the home. So, uh, we do, uh, we hold events, uh, for parents. I know Jay-Z is working in collaboration with other colleagues to do a parent night, uh, at Brentwood, and the staff, uh, Principal Tammy and her team is really excited about that. We want to get parents engaged. Um, and one way to do that is get the kid excited, so that when she goes home, she can tell her parents what she's learning at Reading Partners. Uh, but what's great, what's happening at Brentwood is, is beautiful. There's a mixture of five literacy programs, and we're all complementary. And so we're working right now with just the fourth graders, and we're getting parents on board twofold, building the children's library at home, and then having parent engagement evenings, uh, at the school site.
Okay.
Absolutely. But I'll tell you, if anyone has a answer to, for that secret sauce of what it takes to get parents involved, please let me know.
What about donations in terms of, uh, reading materials? Are, are there a need? Is there a need? Do you have a need for books?
Yes.
Bookcases?
Uh, yes. Oh, absolutely. And, and City Councilmember Moody, if you're suggesting that you're going to open up your pocketbook for us, we'd be more than happy for that, too. Uh, we're constantly accepting donations. It does cost, there's a cost model to operating in a school, uh, but we do a lot of, uh, book drives, and there's a lot of great communities holding book drives on our behalf for the kids, because we, we want to be methodical about building out their library books at home. So we don't give a kid any book. We actually give them a five-finger test, uh, to see if the book is appropriate and right for them to take home.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll be hearing from him.
All right, I appreciate it. I hope so. I hope so. We need all the help.
I said you will.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to, let's see, we don't have any oral reports. Can we report out of our special meeting, our closed session, please?
There's nothing to report from the closed session.
Okay, staff reports? None, okay. And City Council-
Yeah, I did have one, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Just real quickly.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to ask if the council has been receiving their mosquito abatement district reports. We, I wanted them to do it electronically, so I was just wondering, have they been sent out when they come?
I haven't received one.
You haven't? Okay, well, they do come electronically to the city, and I, and I had asked that they be distributed to our emails, your emails?
Okay. I don't know that I, I don't know that I've received anything, but-
Yeah, ma'am. Well, hopefully, after tonight, we'll make that happen.
Yeah, and maybe we can make copies of that.
Because there's important information in here, and I think that you all need to know about it.
Okay.
So that was a quick report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other council members that have anything they want to report out on?
Are you on council reports now?
Yeah, well, we, no one, there were no staff members, and then Councilmember Rutherford kind of transitioned us into council reports. Thanks.
I do, oh, go ahead if you have, I do have one.
I do have some information, okay. So, let's see here. So anyways, I did want to just, for the record, I just want to let the council members know that I have finalized appointments for various regional appointed positions to serve for local agencies and JPAs, so I just wanted to read them into the record, and then there are a few that will need to come back for a resolution, so just wanted to read them out. So for ABAG, I believe that's Association of Bay Area Governments, our Spring General Assembly on April 17th, Councilmember Moody will be attending that. BASCA, Bay Area Water Conservation Agency, Councilmember Abrica will be our appointee for that, and that item will come back to us. CCG, City and County Association of Governments, I'm going to go ahead and serve as our appointee for that, and Councilmember Moody will serve as our alternate. The San Francisco Creek JPA, Councilmember Abrica will serve as our appointee, and Vice Mayor Goshay will serve as an alternate. The San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District and Vector Control, Councilmember Rutherford will continue to serve as our appointee in that role. The South Bayside Waste Management, Vice Mayor Goshay will also serve as our appointee, and Councilmember Rutherford will serve as our alternate. The San Mateo County Libraries JPA, I will go ahead and serve in that role. The San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services, I will also continue to serve in that role, and Councilmember Rutherford will serve as our alternate. The Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance JPA, I will also continue to serve in that role, and Councilmember Moody will serve as our alternate. Our Bay Trail Gap Working Group, will, our appointee will be our Vice Mayor, Goshay. Our Joint City and School Districts, we have two council members who will serve on that committee, and they will be Councilmember Moody and Councilmember Abrica. The East Palo Alto Sanitary District will have two council members that also serve on that committee, and those council members will be Councilmember Rutherford and Councilmember Moody. So just wanted to kind of read that into the record and know that we will have a few of these items coming back. All right? So, and if you are not able to serve on these committees or something, just let me know, and I can make other arrangements. And I believe that's the only item I wanted to report out on. So Councilmember Abrica, did you have something you wanted to report out?
Yes, I did want to, and I, I didn't get, excuse me, a chance to send out an email until late in the afternoon, but, so today, there was, so I wrote something, which I'm going to kind of paraphrase. Today was my regular meeting with our city manager, but she was not able to meet, otherwise I would have conveyed this to her personally. I also, however, would have presented this in the public, because I consider that there's an issue regarding an audit of the rent stabilization program that I think is of, in my opinion, of great public concern. I spoke with several members of the public over the weekend, so I need to express my concern, ask some questions, and make some requests. So through this letter, I am formally requesting responses in writing, and I'm also asking for copies of documents. I'm not assuming that any other council member may want these documents, that's up to you, but that does not preclude me from getting them. So given the public comments that were made at a recent rent board meeting, and discussions and questions that I have heard in the community, I'm asking the following questions. What was the rationale for conducting an organization audit of the rent program? Were there complaints or meetings that took place with landlords or landlord activists? Were there complaints or meetings that took place with tenants or tenant activists? Were there any other special interests lobbying to carry out this audit? Number two, are there, or will there be audits of other departments, such as the Community Development Department, the Police Department, the Finance Department, Senior Services, et cetera? Will the completed report be presented to the rent board and the city council? Was the rent board consulted for input when this audit was initiated? And what use will be made of this audit report on the rent program? And then I'm making three requests, well, four requests. One is, I'd like to get a copy of the contract that was extended to the person or firm conducting the audit, including a detailed budget with all specified expenses. Also, I'd like to get a copy of the resume and the background qualifications on the contractor. Third, I'd like a document outlining the scope of the work, the methodology used, including any instruments used for data collection, and also names and responses of people interviewed and the documents that were consulted. The last request for documents is to have a copy of the completed report with any attachments of raw data that was used for analysis and summaries. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Abrica. Your request has been noted. So I think we can go ahead and move on to community forum now. Do we have speakers on this item?
Yes, we do. First speaker, Sonia Spencer, followed by Bob Gomez.
Good evening, council members, and Mayor Martinez. My name is Sonia Spencer, and I live at 1949 Cooley Avenue, number six. I'm here today to give my revamp of what Mayor Abrica just read about. I'm concerned about the rent stabilization program, and earlier this month, I sent out letters to each of you reflecting that. And I've also given your clerk letters for you to refresh your memory about the letter that I wrote, if I may pass them.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm hoping that the, each of you did receive the letter, and it does state much of the questions that were raised by Mr. Abrica would probably satisfy me, you know, if they were answered. But however, I wanted to be public about my concern on a line item that's reflected on the budget presented to the body last year when we made our presentation to the city, and that line item is overhead. So when we discussed it last night, last year in our presentation to the city, we were promised that the Finance Department would get back to us on ways to knock that thing out. So however, to this date, we have not seen or heard from the Finance Department in regards to this line item that will implode the program, you know, at the current rate that it's going up, $5,000 a year. So I just want to publicly ask this council to address that line item in a concrete fashion and, you know, get back to the rent stabilization board, because as Mr. Abrica stated, we were knocked, you know, off our feet with the audit information as well, and we have not been privy to that information as well. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Bob Gomez, followed by Win Gersich.
Good evening. Bob Gomez, 402 East O'Keefe, beautiful East Palo Alto, thank God. I was happy to see all the people that were there last night at the meeting we had, considering the, excuse me, Woodside project there. I was glad to see Mr. Moody there, Ms. Lisa, Ruben was busy, but the rest of you, I was sorry to say that I didn't see you all. But, like, the lady before me, and like, Mr. Ruben Abrica says, we are concerned about it, and we should be more definitely geared to work this out as soon as possible, or get some type of a concrete meaning behind it. Now, I would like to see some, something done by, from the management of Woodland, what type of meeting we're going to have, or we're going to have a meeting, what's the agenda or things like that? Because, yes, it is, I haven't heard anything. Maybe other people have, but I haven't heard anything about if, what they're going to be doing, or what they're not going to be doing, and so forth. I'm sure you people are aware that around Woodland, and in our case, they tore down that, those buildings there because, for parking space, and now, that's what they said, though. I don't know what's happened afterwards, because I haven't heard anything lately. But it was gratifying to see you all there last night, and the people talking about what we're trying to do. Thank you all.
Thank you. Win Gersich, followed by William Webster.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, 30166 Industrial Parkway, Southwest Hayward. And I'm here tonight to tell you something very exciting, and thank you. On March 22nd, this Saturday, they're going to have a march against fluoridation in San Francisco at Union Square, and it starts at 11:00, and they're going to have a rally there first, and they're going to tell you about all the poisons that our water providers are adding to our drinking water, and Mr. Abrica can contest to that, because he has the 15 university studies of why fluoridation is poison. He knows that it causes cancer, he knows that it causes Alzheimer's, it knows it lowers children's IQs, and he has all the public records. You can ask him for a copy, because I put it on the Basque Water Board, I gave it to Alameda County Water District Water Board, I gave it to East Bay MUD, and I go all over the place to different city councils and actually put the studies on public record. So you can also look up, what they're going to do is, if you want any information, this is www.cleannwatercalifornia.org. Once again, that's cleannwatercalifornia.org, and you can also see all of Paul Connets', 15 university studies, 50 reasons why not to fluoridate, and they talk about also how, you know, they put fluoride in Prozac, and they put it in Paxil, Zoloft antidepressants, and antibiotics, fluoroquinolones, and they actually should have a poison label on it because it causes cancer. But because we have a corrupt FDA, and we have the head of Monsanto there, some of these drugs have been passed, and they've actually passed laws not to put the poison label on these drugs that have fluoride in it, which is the active ingredient in rat poisoning and insecticide. So if they know that fluoride causes cancer, how the heck could they put it in an antidepressant or put it in an antibiotic? And this is why the people have got to speak, and in masses, we have power. Instead of running for the cure, we need to go after the cause. Please show up at this, they're going to march from Union Square in San Francisco at 11:00 this Saturday to Justin Herman Plaza, and it's really important that we all show up and speak up, and I hope that the city council comes, you have the flyers right there, and inform the public, because this is your chance to stop the poison in our public drinking water, and fluoridation doubles breast cancer death rates, and black women have more breast cancer than any other race. So I hope to God that you all show up. Thank you.
Thank you. William Webster, followed by Leland Francois.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is William Webster, reside at 480 East O'Keefe. First of all, I have the regrettable duty to inform you of the passing of Mr. James Blakey, who was a member of the first city council of East Palo Alto. He passed on this past Sunday morning at the Long Beach VA. As more information is given me, I will let people know how they can express their condolences. Since he was a member of the first city council, it might be appropriate for the city council, the present city council, to send some sort of a message, or flowers, or whatever, to the, to the service, which I believe will be, there'll be a service here in East Palo Alto. I also wanted to mention that I've distributed the, the section of the rent stabilization ordinance that describes the powers and duties of the rent stabilization board. Under item D9, it states statements that the board makes such studies, surveys, and investigations, conducts such hearings, and obtains such information as is necessary to carry out its powers and duties. Section, paragraph N describes the role of staff. The city manager is authorized to employ and pay staff for the board, including hearing examiners and inspectors, as may be necessary to perform the board's functions efficiently in order to fulfill the purposes of this chapter. As was indicated, the rent stabilization board was not officially notified that there was an audit of the program going on. This is a very, very serious matter. We have had at least one audit in the past, I believe Ms. Rutherford was on the board at the time, as a formal process that came through the city council in terms of, of funding the, funding it, it came, and three senior members of the Berkeley Rent Board were empowered to conduct it. It was a totally above-board situation. What I'm asking is that the report, the audit, be made available to the rent stabilization board, so that we can retroactively, if it is our pleasure, approve the report, because this is completely illegitimate.
Mr. Webster, can you wind down your thoughts?
Yeah. I'm just saying that I think there is some great potential for litigation based upon how this so-called audit was conducted. We knew nothing about it, and Mr. Moody, who came to our meeting on, was to can attest to our consternation hearing about this, this report. But I think it's something that you need to consult with Mr. Nagel about, because what was done does not comport with past history. Thank you very much.
Mr. Webster, your time is now up. Thank you. Mr. Leland Francois.
Mayor Martinez and members of the city of East Palo Alto Council, instead of Leland Francois, on behalf of my voluntary status with the Community Emergency Response Team, KI6AWN, amateur radio operator, and I am also the innovator behind the 911 BTDS, our Building and Terrain Designator System. But that's just something I volunteered to do over the years, and over the years, I've been working at this for about the past 30 years, and it appears that every city and county jurisdiction that I volunteered for, I've kind of left them in a better state than what I found them. So as a volunteer, I, I have suggested that I get some support for the, my planned South County monitoring station, and I need a point of clarification from you, Mayor Martinez. Are you both a liaison for San Mateo County OES, in addition to Santa Clara County? I did hear you say Santa Clara County.
No, San Mateo.
San Mateo County. Well, this past Thursday, we did have a communications drill, and this is applicable to you also, City Manager Gonzalez, excuse me. Everything went fine. This is probably one of the only annual drills we've had where all the communication mediums were pretty much utilized. And I said that because I- And I said that because I monitor and I have a pretty good background in communications. And things, even though things are progressive in that area of emergency response, we still have a long ways to go. At 9 o'clock Thursday morning, there was a, there was a fire on the Dunbarton Bridge. And an equivalent scenario would say that that's a very vital link between the East Bay and Silicon Valley. And traffic was backed up and the Miller Park Fire responded to it, but it left everybody out. And the fact that I have filed a Federal Communications Commission complaint based on the 2012 Christmas Day fire, I'm working with the Federal Communications Commission. But it's very important that I, we work very closely together, your office and your office with the other, with the police department and the local volunteers because we do have a new hospital going up so that we can better coordinate our communications. And my overall intent through the monitoring system is to bring both the communication system that we recently designed in addition to the 2010 Emergency Preparedness Guide that Chief Davis put together. So I'm trying to bring the two together. So the apparatus is very important, the location and the mapping system.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes Community 4. Okay.
Please, I would like, briefly like to mention that the portable mobile van in which the equipment is being used in is parked on Bay Road. But I am working with the police department to alleviate the problem because I don't want to interfere with your redevelopment project at all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to our next item this evening, item number eight, public hearings.
I just wanted to say, Madam Mayor, that Mr. Gomez had mentioned that he didn't see all the council member at the West Side.
Plenar meeting?
Yeah. And that's because we can't have a majority of the board at a meeting like that. Because eventually, if it comes to the full board and we have five members that have been there, then we've been influenced. So that's why I didn't choose to come, so that I wouldn't violate this Brown Act.
Okay. All right, thank you. So item number eight A, adopt amended ordinance number 368, the California Green Building Standards Code to incorporate changes requested by the California Building Standards Commission.
First of all, I was having attended last night. I appreciate that we didn't have a quorum because I didn't want to be the one being the bouncer and figuring out which one of you had to go. So I appreciate you heeding that suggestion from your attorney and doing that. And I thank William for coming over to the other meeting, William Webster coming over from, because we had a quorum of the Rent Stabilization Board. He recognized that and he came over for the Cooley Landing meeting. So I appreciate that as well for understanding. The Brown Act is important that we abide by. Thank you. So this is the public hearing for revisions to the California Building Code. As we indicated in March 4th meeting, we erroneously deleted two small sections of the building code related to the green building. And when we submitted our package of all ordinances to the state, the state said, this is great, except that you went and deleted two sections of the green building code that you were not allowed to delete. And to, and we'd asked that you modify and revise the ordinance accordingly and then we can certify and that you've met all the obligations. So this is a pretty simple cleanup issue. It was really unintentional when we deleted those. And this simply puts us in line with what all jurisdictions are adopting throughout the state with regard to the green building code. And this will then allow us to move, if this is approved and then becomes effective, then we will forward this to the state and should receive our blessing to move forward and enforce the building code accordingly.
All right, thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item?
If I may, Madam Mayor, it'd be helpful to open the public meetings before the speakers.
Okay, do I need to make a motion to open the public hearing or do I just say?
No, you can just state your opening.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this ordinance. And yes, we have a speaker, Win Gersich.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, 30166 Industrial Parkway Southwest Hayward. And I know that you're talking about green building and I've studied quite a bit of this because I've been watching videos on it. My friend's in real estate and she just passed a test on this. And my sister's also studied architecture and interior design. And one thing that I'm really disturbed about is the fact that a lot of these green buildings, you know, they want to, here, city councils have done this for years. They were talking about collecting thermometers because they're so afraid that if a thermometer breaks, it's going to put mercury in the bay and recycle water. But then again, they turn around and they pass ordinances that half your lights have to be fluorescent lights, which are, have this mercury in them. And there's a lot of people that don't speak English and they don't understand that this mercury lights, when they break, if you breathe that stuff, it's poison. They don't realize that it belongs in a hazmat waste dump when you have a broken light bulb. And what amazes me is how on earth, it's almost like an oxymoron. You're worried about a stinking thermometer, but then you turn around and you pass building codes to put lights that have mercury in them. I don't understand that or why they even do it. And right now, one of the things that really is very frightening is the fact like San Francisco is now going to ban bottled water. So they want everybody to drink from the tap. Well, we know that the pipes right now, because of all the poisons that they put in the drinking water, the pipes are leaching lead and copper. And we have a lot of problems for the fact, building green, you know, you've just seen how that Bay Bridge is corroding because we're buying all these metals from China that are being recycled metals. And the Bay Bridge isn't even a year old yet and it's already corroding. And yet we're buying those hitchhatchy repipe mop, you know, the water pipes. We're getting that as, you know, from China too. So if that Bay Bridge is corroding, what do you think's going to happen to those pipes when you're putting corrosive poisons in it? So, and then if you go for plastic pipes, then you're leaching all these poisons from that too. So when you think about building green, I think we really need to think about what we're putting in the drinking water that is going to poison people because the metals are corroding and 40,000 babies are born every year with holes in their hearts. And a lot of that has to do with the metals in the drinking water. So when you're building green, please think, we need to have things recyclable. We also, and also too, don't take your toxic sewage ludge and mix it up with tree mulch and put it on the ground so it contaminates your aquifers the way Palo Alto is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all your speakers. Okay. Councilmembers, do we have any comments for staff? I think John was pretty clear about just having a minor error and now we're cleaning it up. We don't have any comments or questions. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adopt amended ordinance number 368, California Green Building Standard Code to incorporate changes requested by the California Building Standards Commission.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Rutherford, a second by Vice Mayor Gochet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. All right, so moving on to item number nine, Policy in Action 9A, General Plan Update Progress Report. And I think we should have some items up here.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. It is my distinct, whoa, displeasure to have that in my face. But it is my pleasure to introduce Ann Cook, who is the General Plan Project Manager. She has not been before you, but she has been to the planning commission and been working through various advisory committees. But she is doing an excellent job coordinating with the prime consultant, Raimi, and their sub consultants. And I think this presentation will give you a good flavor and feel for where we are and where we're heading with the general plan update. We would ultimately, at the end of this, certainly like to hear if there are specific areas and issues that you would like more emphasis on as we come back. At this point, we're looking, probably coming back roughly quarterly. Again, that's an issue for you as the council to decide how frequently you would like. That's been the schedule at this point. So with that, I will turn over to Ann and we'll talk about where we are.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Ann Cook, General Plan Project Manager, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to provide you with an update on the general plan. As you know, the project has been going on for quite a while and we want to get in a sort of regular process of updating you. We're beginning to move faster through the process and so we just really want to keep you abreast. I'm going to briefly go back in time a little bit, just for the benefit of the public listening and anyone watching. The project we are working on is the Updated East Palo Alto General Plan. Included within that project is a West Side Area Plan or Policies. We're still working on what form that would take, but we definitely are spending extra time studying the West Side because of its unique characteristics. Also, an environmental impact report will be done on this project and zoning code updates to bring the zoning code and the general plan into consistency with each other. The general plan is a long-term policy document for the city. It looks out 20-plus years at the direction the city wants to go in terms of its build and also its natural environment, what areas might be appropriate for development, what areas might be appropriate for no development, and really works through a lot of different issues having to do with transit, infrastructure, public health, government services and facilities. This particular general plan is being funded in very large part by the Strategic Growth Council. That's a sort of group of state agencies that are working in concert to help fund programs that lead to sort of a range of goals that the state agencies have. And in this particular case, it's health and safety and good planning to minimize transit, greenhouse gas impacts and others. So while we focus, and certainly lately, we've been focusing a lot on the very important issue of housing in the city, there's also a lot of other issues that we're going to be focusing on in this planning process to meet the goals of the Strategic Growth Council. And by the end of this, and I'll get to the slide in a moment, we'll be looking at a lot of different indicators that we have promised we would help address through this planning process. But I just wanted to mention briefly the West Side Area Plan. We have a separate committee for that. I'll go into more detail, but we'll be looking more closely at affordable housing and infrastructure, parking, and some unique problems associated with the West Side. So this is an example of some of the indicators that we'll be looking at as we do the plan. By the end of the plan, and certainly as it's being implemented, we'll be doing reports back on how we've addressed some of these challenges, such as reducing asthma and obesity, reducing water usage in the city, increasing access to open space, just a range of environmental and health issues that are often interrelated and that can now, that can be impacted by how we develop land and how we, and what properties we save. So it's just a very interesting way to look at the general plan. This is a very large project. I just wanted to remind you of the breadth of people working on this project, from staff to members of the public, to advisory committees, to all of you, and then a very broad range of expertise among the consultants team that is working on this. And they are really a remarkable group of people, Raimi and Associates in particular. They have a deep level of experience in health-related aspects of planning, which is really interesting as well. I've used this slide a couple times in presentations to students who I talk to from time to time about why they should be urban planners. And I like this slide because it shows all the different ways you can approach urban planning and all the different expertise that help to make a good plan. This is a slide from several months ago, I guess probably when you first, when this last came to you, maybe initiation of the planning process before I was here. And I wanted to go through it just briefly to remind people of the process. The project was initiated in the summer and we're moving now through existing conditions report and visioning in the planning process. And as you'll note, we're behind, probably about three months behind the original schedule. And I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. But there is enough, given the schedule, that we are confident that we will be done with this project as planned in the spring of 2015. And if we're a little bit behind, we still have plenty of time before the end of the grant. I believe that's the spring of 2016, but we plan to be done in the spring of 2015. So this is the schedule to date. The grant agreement and consultant contract were executed in March. In July, the advisory committees were formed. In September, you received an update. In October, there were the first GPAC, that's the General Plan Advisory Committee, and WAPAC, West, excuse me, West Side Area Plan. We've been playing with this a little bit. It's the West Side Area Plan Advisory Committee. They had their first meetings in October and then there were town hall meetings. I'm going to go into a little more detail on each of these meetings that were held in November. And then in December, the advisory groups were reconstituted. And so that has really slowed down the process somewhat, particularly with the West Side Area Planning Group. They, that group has had considerable change. I think we have five or six new members of that committee. So they have just, they're just now getting started. And so we're spending a lot of time bringing them up to speed. And as you'll see now, in 2014, we're really pretty much off and running. We've had meetings in January, we have them in February, we had our existing conditions report completed and there's one copy, I think, over there. It's quite a hefty document, but it's online for anyone who wants to see it. We had WAPAC meetings in March. We've had two. The first was one of our regular working meetings. And then last night, we had the very well-attended housing meeting to talk about housing specifically as it addresses the West Side, but also it's of such importance to the city as a whole that we more widely broadcast that meeting. And then in April, we'll be kicking into some more regular meetings of the GPAC and WAPAC groups. So just to go back in time, when the meetings first took place, they really were to provide people information about the existing conditions, to really start people to think about visioning the future that they wanted in East Palo Alto, both citywide, the GPAC, and also on the West Side. So there were a lot of just very introductory discussions of where we're at and where we could go. And you can see on the WAPAC side of this scale, of this slide, there is sort of more fine-tuned interest in sort of neighborhood shops and community engagement is very important there. And so that sort of reflects the difference in the two bodies. The GPAC is looking much more broadly, citywide issues, and the West Side Advisory Committee is looking much more specifically, of course, at the West Side. Then we had town hall meetings in November, and these were very large meetings to really reach out very broadly to the community. The West Side Town Hall Meeting had 125 to 150 attendees and the Citywide Meeting had about 50 attendees. And these were very active meetings, three to four hours on a Saturday, lots of presentations, Q and A, mapping exercises, written exercises. I mean, there was really a way for everybody to participate in a way that they felt comfortable. And we got a lot of input. And by the way, all the summaries of these meetings, and I have them all printed out now and they're about this thick, there's very, very extensive summaries of every meeting on the project website, including the PowerPoint, so that people can refer back when they want to. The Citywide Town Hall Meeting, some of the top community needs that were identified through that meeting were to reduce crime, increase jobs and economic development, preserve affordable housing was also an issue. But here, once again, you see the broader picture. People want to establish a main street or a downtown, have more community events. Coming out of the West Side Town Hall Meeting, a little more focus on local issues of isolation, parking, water supply, development pressures on the West Side, and a lot of discussion though also about the opportunities on the West Side. It's a strong sense of community, very committed, diverse, excellent location, and it's very affordable. So now, just jumping a little forward to the 2014 meetings, back to the WAPAC meeting, we had a very extensive discussion in January and continued it on March 3rd of the guiding principles and desired outcomes for the community. So taking all the input that we've received in different ways, both at the WAPAC meetings and also in the town halls, and turning them into words that will become the guiding principles for the West Side Area Plan. And you have a copy of those on your dais. And included in there is also desired outcomes. And these are outcomes that came out of the town hall meetings and other meetings, and then the advisory committee worked to prioritize those. So they finished that and sort of signed off on it last night's meeting. And here's a sense of what some of them are on the West Side. Once again, affordable housing, avoiding displacement, strong focus on community. And then a medium priority were some of the broader issues that we're looking at citywide, like connecting the West Side to the city and the region, improving public safety, infrastructure issues as well. And once again, getting down to the community needs, a lot of overlap in community needs and the sort of guiding principles, but you'll see the same sort of emphasis on affordable house, housing, trying to avoid displacement, stronger tenant protection laws, et cetera. Last night's meeting was very well-attended. It was, we extensively talked about housing in many different ways. We had a very large presentation. We had a very large presentation on housing existing conditions, and that presentation is excerpted from the existing conditions report that's online. So there's a couple chapters that in different ways address housing issues in the city from a sort of the point of view of what the existing general plan and zoning says, but also looking at housing affordability, looking at housing condition. It's very detailed. And so we did a very rough summary of that. And then we talked quite a bit about housing policy in East Palo Alto, which in general are, the policies in East Palo Alto are very protective of tenants and affordability. We talked briefly about the moratorium, rent stabilization and tenant protections. But then we stepped back and talked about the role of state laws on things like rent stabilization and tenant protections and affordability, because the state laws, we have to address as well, and they do place some limits on what the city can do. We talked about condo conversion, density bonus, inclusionary housing ordinances. A lot of these issues are before the City Council and the Planning Commission during this process, and we talked about how that relates. We went into some housing scenarios. These were what-ifs, because we've gotten so many questions, particularly at the WAPAC, about what might happen. And so we focused really in these what-ifs, is what happens if a property owner comes in today and wants to build a condominium? What happens if a property owner comes in today and wants to change to a commercial use? What happens if they want to upgrade a property? So we walked through those in a very general way, because the reality is, what happens to any particular person really depends on their particular circumstances, their particular income and other issues as well. And then we talked about how you do create long-term affordable housing, and it's really by generating funding to do that. And then we had a lot of question and answer and discussion, and we integrated that into the meeting because it was such a very long presentation. And I guess one thing I just wanted to share with you from that meeting, because it was a very long presentation, and it will be posted as well in a couple days. As ABAG has done a lot of studies of the different types of programs that communities are doing around the Bay Area to address affordability issues, and this is a list of what they're looking at, and it sort of shows, yes, 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 what East Palo Alto's doing. So I think a city as a whole should feel good about what it's doing in terms of trying to provide protections during a time with, with such stress on affordability. And then we're also, there is a recently updated Housing Element Policy Best Practices document that's been sent around to different organizations, and particularly tenant organizations. And in that, actually, there are a couple places where East Palo Alto ordinances are, are tagged as best practices, so I think that you should feel really good about that as well. I almost hit power off. There we go. Okay, the West Side Moratorium, just as a refresher, it was adopted in January 2013. It is scheduled to expire in November of 2014, but I want to have everyone rest assured that the staff and the city attorney are evaluating options to extend that, and we anticipate returning to the City Council in the summer, late summer, with some options for you to consider. Then up in, I haven't spoken in a little while now in this presentation about the general plan advisory committee meetings, and one thing that I think is really important is that we need to focus more now, again, on the general plan for all of the city. And so we began to do that in February. We reviewed and prioritized key issues, and you have that document on your dais as well. And one thing we're looking at is neighborhood boundaries and neighborhood character, and sort of starting to talk about specific focus on those neighborhoods. And that will allow us also to go back into the neighborhoods and talk in smaller meetings with neighborhood folks about their immediate areas and the changes that they want to see there. So we have everything from very large town hall meetings to very small community meetings that we're planning. So one of the, this is just sort of an example of the type of work we're doing. 1999 general plan was based around these neighborhood boundaries. In general, they still make a lot of sense for East Palo Alto, but we've had a lot of boots on this, on the streets, sort of taking a look at, are there different ways to think about some of these neighborhood boundaries? And so we've worked with the general plan advisory committee on refining those boundaries a little bit, and just to give you one example, for example, University Corridor, maybe narrowing that planning area to the properties that actually front on University Avenue, because the ones on the sides are really more residential in character, and we want to think about them differently as we plan. So this gets us into sort of community character and design issues, which we'll really be going into in greater detail. This is a city of different types of neighborhoods. They have different character, there's different activity hubs within those neighborhoods, there's varying streetscapes and amenities, and we're going to go into those sorts of levels. This is an example of one of the many diagrams in the existing conditions report, and it begins to really show you where there's some different hubs. A lot of those blue lines are transit links or pedestrian links. You see emphasis on links across the highway, and so that's the kind of level we're getting down into soon. This is just one schedule. I don't have the one today for the WAPAC, because we want to update it after last night's meeting, but it gives you the sense of the, the meeting's schedule. The next meeting we'll be having is on brainstorming, areas of change and neighborhood improvements. This is, once again, the GPAC. It's in April, scheduled right now for April 2. And then these meetings go all the way through to my favorite, Celebration Implementing the General Plan, in April of 2015. And I just want to touch briefly on the existing conditions report. I gave a very long presentation at the Planning Commission about that report. So suffice it here to say that it's, it's a current snapshot of key issues in the city, and it's a working document that becomes the base for the planning we're doing, but also becomes the base for the EIR that we'll be preparing. So it's really important to us, if you read it, whatever, anybody reads it, if you see anything that doesn't sound right to you, that sounds like maybe we got facts wrong or something, please let us know. That, we won't be changing that document, but we're keeping track of issues that people spot, so that we can make sure that they're addressed in the planning process and also in the EIR. And so really, also, I'm going to show you right now is just, this is the information that's in that report. If you're interested in housing and demographics and affordability, I would steer you right away to chapters one, two, and it's the sixth bullet here, but I believe it's chapter seven in the report, Housing Conditions and Needs. Those are very interrelated chapters that go into great detail. And that's my presentation for the night. I just want to point out the website here for everybody who's watching and listening. That's where you can get the real deep information, and it's regularly updated.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That was a really good presentation.
You're welcome.
Do we have any speakers on this item? Did you want to speak, Bob, on this? Bob Gomez.
Bob Gomez, 402 East Keith in East Palo Alto. Thank God. Beautiful East Palo Alto. The only thing I have about your presentation, those are good, but boundaries. I don't like the, the word "boundaries," and I'll let you, and I'll tell you why, because as you know, we have, let's say, crime in this city, and lots of the kids, I won't say kids, I'd say lots of, of the crime statutes go by boundary. Like, some places, they, they can wear red, and if you go put a red shirt over there, they get angry and so forth. So this is what I'm getting at. If we're going to have boundaries, and somebody's going to say, hey, you don't belong over here, you live over there, and vice versa. And like I said, I don't really care for that word "boundaries." Maybe you can define it a little different or, or something, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, too, we have questions for staff, comments about the report.
Through the chair, I did have one question on the, so on the moratorium, I know you mentioned late summer. If you can bend down earlier in the summer, I think is better, because our experience with moratoriums is always that, you know, if we start pushing it all the way to, close to the end, for one reason or another, it's always delays or more information, then it becomes very, kind of a crisis. And so I know that, that the staff is looking at options, but I just feel like the sooner a discussion takes place, the better, because it, yes. So I, I don't know how long it will take to outline or sketch some possible options that at least the council can be looking at. And, you know, so anyway, I just want to express that.
Okay.
I just, you know, because the council issued recesses in August, so if you mean late summer, do you mean like late July or September? Because once we start getting, that's the fall, it's not the summer anymore, so, or maybe a special meaning, I don't know. It's just something to think about.
Okay.
We, we understand that. I, if I could say that the, I think the biggest issue we have is that we, as we look at calendaring, we're trying to make sure that, that, that we don't underlap it too much, because the ideal is to have, I think, the next, if there isn't a, if there is a subsequent moratorium, that that runs as long as it, as it needs to, to allow the general plan. So that, but we'll, we'll work on the schedule and bring it back.
Even that, I'm just saying, I think the sooner the council is aware of the options.
Sure.
Then, like you said, one option is let it go as far as possible. Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't want to leave it till the last minute.
We'll, we'll work with John Nagel and the city manager and bring it back to you, some options.
Okay.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question to staff. So first of all, I just really applaud the commitment of staff and for last night's gathering. I thought you were well-prepared and, and did a great job just creating an environment where people can be engaged in the activity, and they certainly were. So, but in terms of the, those who participate on the advisory commissions, those who have been appointed by us, is there any curriculum or any development that takes place for those who serve as commissioners to help them with their learning curve on these, on these topics? And firstly, I certainly want to applaud those who, who choose to serve, but it is a weighty issue. So what is being done to help them along the way?
I, I can't speak too much to what was originally done, because it was, it was before me, although I have seen all the handouts, and they're quite extensive about, you know, what their role is. I know that with the new members that are coming on, I've been calling them up and meeting with them one-on-one, if that's what they need to sort of bring them up to speed. And I have met with a couple members and have a couple others that are scheduled, and I think it's particularly hard for them, and it's very hard for the advisory committee members to understand how they fit into the bigger planning process. And one of the things that we're very aware of and are really trying to work on is that we speak planneries and legalese as well. And so we're really trying to develop ways to communicate very clearly, so that we're not just losing people by the way we're speaking.
Right.
And, but there's no set curriculum. I have been thinking about that some, frankly, because I think there are a lot of good handouts and things in the planning world for citizen planners to sort of empower citizens to do planning, and so we could probably find some materials to give them.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if they were more equipped to lead in some of the smaller neighborhood discussions.
Yes.
Around the type, the topic, and to really, you know, take those small living room discussions and really help people as they prepare for these larger community forums. Because I think, you know, what I saw at Castano and what I saw last evening, we have a tendency to keep reiterating the same comments, right? And it's not because people aren't engaged, but they just, they don't have, in some cases, enough information to kind of move the agenda forward.
Right. I, I have to say, you know, driving home last night, I was, we had been asked to really focus on housing, and I, it was really a great exercise, I think, for the team as well, to really hone down and try to come up with a presentation that explained so many different aspects of housing. But what was, I was driving home, I really was thinking like, you know, it's time to, to go back to the vision thing and really think about all the other things that we want to accomplish in this plan, and how the housing relates to that and is affected by the other choices we make as well. So I, I take your point. I think we have to figure out how to lead to that next place.
Okay. And another area observation is that, you know, a lot of conversations being directed towards the housing, the housing issue. Is there any thoughts about giving the, our landlords an opportunity to be responsive, to kind of, you know, provide a update on some of the things that they're doing, to talk about their commitment to being a part of the overall strategy for the community? Because I, there seems to be this adversarial tone around the, the role of the landlords versus the role of the tenant. And in what I see, when I go to an EQR property or campus, I see an engaged landlord, if you would, who's trying to create a better environment for the tenants. So just want to know if there's been any discussion about giving, providing a platform for them to give some input.
Well, certainly, I, you know, our objective and, and hope is that all the property owners throughout the city will, to some extent, engage in this process.
Right.
Because every, every decision made in this pol, in this policy document has some implication on, on a piece of land and every piece of land. Clearly, the West Side Advisory Group there that was put together, and that process was in part designed around trying to create a fairly compact environment there in which the property owners would and could actively participate in the process and engage with their tenants, with the advisory members. And I, as far as, you know, EQR is concerned, they have been very actively monitoring and participating with that. I think the issue, to some extent at this point, has been that it's been, a lot of what we've been doing is a lot of primer work in terms of background and information, and we haven't reached the point of really talking prospectively, what's the vision down the line. As you were there and, and Lisa were there, I mean, part of the issue that really is of, of concern, I think, and should be concerned to the residents as well as the community as a whole, is that we are looking at a vision going out to 30 years, and we have properties that are reaching, and certainly by the time this planning horizon is done, the 20- to 30-year horizon that we're looking at in this plan. We have many properties there that were not built for long-term occupancy and standing there, that will be approaching 70 to 80 years old by that point, well beyond their lifecycle time. And so there, there really needs to look at that, there needs to be a look at that. And that does not just include EQR properties, that's a lot of, a number of properties and property owners involved.
Their name is called all the time, but I know there's many other.
So I, I, and I, and I know that's fairly long answers to what shouldn't have been a big question, but I think the broader perspective on it, I think there will be a lot more engagement by the property owner's side of things as we move into the next phases of this, which is looking at the longer-term vision and what we can do with infrastructure to get, how we can address parks and open space, and how can we ensure long-term deed-restricted type affordability potentially, both on the West Side as well as in other areas of the city.
Okay. And finally, just a comment. I really would like to see these types of summary or updates being provided to Ravenswood City School District in some capacity, whether it's approaching the board, board or working with some of the parent groups, parent advisory groups to, just to kind of give them a sense of the types of things that the community is talking about overall, and to find out if there is ways in which they can participate in some future discussions, so.
You know, one of the conversations we've had with the, the team really plays into that, which is, in many of the neighborhoods, the school is really the hub.
The hub, right.
And yet, because of security reasons, the schools are so closed down. So, you know, one of the many questions we have is, you know, what, what, if anything, could be sort of done about that to really make, because there, there's a very high population of children also. It's 18% of the residents are, you know, is it, I can't remember, it's a very, very unusually high percentage of, of residents are children in East Palo Alto. So you probably know that, but that's unusual, so I noted, noted that. And so I think there's a real opportunity to, to do that. And back to your other point, so in this big, large formal presentation, we didn't talk so much about trade-offs and all last night, but in the previous WAPAC meeting, one of the conversations we got to was, okay, what do you do when you have a situation where you have, you know, apartment buildings that are old, and rent stabilization is a very great tool to protect affordability, but we know now that the turnover there is quite rapid. Most people move out within one to four years.
One to four years, right.
So, so it ends up feeling like, well, that's not a very permanent affordable solution. So, so we did begin to have some conversations about, okay, well, how do you get it then? And one of the things we talked about was in a situation where everything's pretty much built out, really, you are starting to look at trade-offs. I mean, you have to start figuring out what you're going to do with your property, what you're willing to give up in your goals. you're willing to give up in your goals, what you're willing to take away. And to some extent, I think some people have very negative thoughts associated with having large property owners, but in another way, it makes trade-offs easier to accomplish. And so we've begun to have some conversations about that, not that that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, but that it's not just one thing.
Sure.
You know, that, that there are opportunities as well as concerns.
It's an opportunity for better partnerships.
Yeah, and so I think, I think we'll be able to move into that kind of discussion more.
Okay.
If I could just add, I'd like to just give my thanks to Ann and John. This is a big, big task. This is something that is often undertaken in other cities by several bodies, several individuals, and we're doing it with a very small staff, and Ann's done a wonderful job. The reason it's been able to move forward is because she's come on board since then. That's what's been able to move forward, and they've done a really wonderful job of engaging the community. So I think we're lucky to have them both on our staff to make sure that this is a good plan that will get us through the next several years.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again. And we're going to go ahead and move on.
Through the chair, I did have.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. So I did want to say that I, I've had the opportunity to attend one and one of the meetings, and, you know, definitely want to congratulate you, I think, for the going beyond, which I think we need to do in our community, beyond what may be the regular process, because I think it is very important, but it's been very educational, and I think it's a, you know, very good, very good process. I've had the chance to read parts of it, but I'm going to try to read as much as I can. One, one suggestion I would make is that when it comes to, you know, as you mentioned, for example, that in the area of housing, although it continues to be, you know, a big issue of concern to us, but I would say that in the 30-year history of the city, the city really has done best practices. And that's why it gets mentioned, because I think the city throughout, I would say, most of the city councils overall have been very consistent in trying to find ways to, you know, protect rental housing, to try to enhance the ownership aspect, and even the percentage of amount of money that has been set aside, et cetera. So I, I wouldn't shy away, because I think that we sometimes tend to emphasize only the problems, which I think we need to focus on it. But we, I think through this planning process, the community should be celebrated also for the things that it has done over the years. So it's not any, any one city council or any particular people, but it's really been, if you're talking about the character of the community, I think that is part of the character of the community since the beginning of the city, that we try to support and try to address the needs of everyone, but particularly those who are most vulnerable, whether it's displacement or whatever. So, because I think there's different areas. One of them is the housing, so it's not seen only as a problem, you know? Second, I think there's other areas like crime reduction, or even economic development, et cetera, that, you know, every time we compare ourselves to the surrounding communities, you know, that's a losing, it's a given, it's predictable, it's, we're going to look bad. And so, so what? You know, we've known that a long, 50 years, 100 years, that's a huge structural problem in the country. But I think what we need to focus in those areas is perhaps more on the progress that has been made. Because I was looking, for example, at the crime statistics, and it does show us still, because it is true, we still have, for cities our size, a little higher, you know, problem with that. But what about 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago? And I think that people need to hear that. The other is like the whole environmental work that has been done, the, you know, Cooley Landing is really the end result of a whole process that took place, too. And, and that's, that's also something that's been acknowledged as, as best practices. So that would just be, you know, my suggestion to, to try to keep that, you know, that thread in mind, as, as well as obviously the problems that we have. And people are more likely to point out the things that we need and the problems, but let's see, you know, what's been done. But otherwise, I really feel like it's on track pretty well, even if it's a little behind, but, and, and what you mentioned at the end, I think is very important for all our committee members, is that this planning process is not going to necessarily take care of every immediate problem right now. So we need to shift a little bit while those issues are also addressed, and, you know, other venues, other ways in which that, that is happening. You know, the last thing I'll mention, just, and Mr. William Webster mentioned it, I, I wanted to do the same thing, and that is that we recently found out that one of our original council members just passed away, Mr. Blakely, who was a small business person, was very supportive of the whole housing efforts during that time. So I want to acknowledge that. And maybe at the end of the meeting, we could adjourn, you know, in his name, because he was a longtime resident, small business person. And on April 1st, also will be the, talking about the housing thing, April 1st was 30 years ago when the voters first approved the rent law. So that kind of established the basis for a lot of the things that are still going on, you know, in terms of housing protection. It kind of set the tone in a way, so that, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So do we have any other council members that want to speak about the report? Okay. Thank you again. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment on closed session items? No? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn into closed session, and then Councilmember Abrika, did you want to? Oh, actually, you know what? That was for the end of the meeting, when we come back later.
Okay.
For Mr. Blakely.
Close the meeting.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to go ahead and go into closed session.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't see, I didn't see you come in. Yeah, we should wait. We're going to come down. Oh, it's perfect. It was perfect. It was perfect. Got money on this. Nine ten? Oh, and nine oh five. I thought it was a man. I couldn't remember, like, I think I got nine oh nine. The boat. I'm right here. I'm doing you. So, I was outside. Norah was in closed session running. About to come out in ten minutes. I don't want to change the tone of the meeting. You know, people continually grossly exaggerated my authority and power over anything. I can see what my 14-year-old does to me.
Yeah, we can see. Okay. Just like, check you. I'm just waiting. Yeah. Easy, easy, Jay. Yeah.